I'm going to ask you to call the, uh... Madam Clerk. We're going to start this meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach. Counselor Braden. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor O'Malley. And Counselor Wu.
Wonderful. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would ask all councilors and guests to please rise. I'm going to invite Counselor Asabi George, who will introduce our clergy for today.
Thank you, Madam President. As we celebrate, as we celebrate Black History Month, I'm honored to have Pastor Kiki Florissant from the Voice of Tabernacle Church in Matapan with us today. In addition to his role in the church, Pastor Florissant, or Pastor Kiki, has been a tireless advocate for our Haitian community as chairman of the Board of Directors for the Haitian-American United Organization, especially for those impacted by the constant attacks to temporary protected status by the federal government. Boston has the third largest Haitian immigrant population in the United States, and they represent one of our strongest immigration, immigrant populations here in the city. The diversity we see in our city today is a testament to the countless contributions of the Haitian community to our culture, our history, our economy, and so much more. As an at-large city counselor, I'm honored to represent such a diverse and vibrant, thriving community. I would like to thank Pastor Kiki for his dedication and his leadership to empower our strong Haitian community. Thank you for joining us today, Boston City Council Meeting.
Thank you so very much, Counselor Asabi George. Thank you, Madam President, Kim Janey, and thank you, all our councilors here. And then I'm so grateful, heartfelt gratitude for all of you, and also for accepting me to come in this dire climate in that we are living. That's the only comfort we can find. It's only from the Lord. Let us pray. God, our Father, you know how we are all tempted daily, and that we sin against you every day. We thank you that Christ has died for our past, present, and future sins. Holy Spirit, please protect our councilors against the many temptations that come their way, make ineffective the temptations of power and pride, and help them to focus and count on you when they are struggling with decisions and difficult policies. I pray spiritual protection as well as social and emotional well-being over the councilors, family members, spouses, children, siblings, relatives, and parents. Lord, may you continue to pour out your blessings upon the works of them all. Holy Spirit, please protect, preserve, and inspire the entire municipal team in our city, and give them the wisdom to work in unity toward improvements, the quality of life of all communities, to promote and defend social, economic, and environmental justice. Father, I pray that you grant them your understanding to work together for your glory by putting people first and to put away all selfish defenses that delay the work that is clearly needed. Please, give our leaders the energy, the need to do the work you have called and appointed them to do. Father, I thank you for your mercy. Thank you for your compassion. Thank you for your love, and thank you for your sovereign rule over us all. May we look to you in all circumstances, God, in your son's name, Jesus Christ, and people of God will say, "Amen." Thank you so very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. At this time, we will have a special presentation from Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to invite Alyssa Krieger and Kara Holmquist from the MSPCA, as well as Kobe, and I think Lola is here. And if Margarita and Maria want to join us as well, they are the proud parents of, no pressure if not, but if you'd like to join us, they are the proud parents of Lola and Kobe. Nine-week-old Kobe is going to help me with my speech, although I think the council president may steal her from me before we're done. Several years ago, this body proclaimed World Spay and Neuter Day, Awareness Day. This is something that began in 1995, 25 years ago, and the reason why it began is because there was a real issue of overcrowding in animal shelters where animals would have to be euthanized at the rate of about 14 to 17 million animals per year. That was just 25 years ago. And because of incredible organizations like Angel Memorial, and the MSPCA, and so many other animal welfare groups, we've been able to cut that number down to about 2.7 million pets per year. So think about that remarkable awareness. Over one and a half million pets have been spayed or neutered each year, and that's significantly reduced the overpopulation of ferals and strays. It's such a, such a great honor to represent an incredible institution like the MSPCA. If you haven't been there, I encourage you all to go and visit. You will likely not leave empty-handed, because they have a wonderful shelter as well, and they provide incredible service. And one of the things I was most proud of passing as a counselor was the Puppy Meal Bill, which this body passed with the support of some of you. It would have been all of you, but some of you weren't serving at the time, which really was a gold standard and has led the way to municipalities around the Commonwealth that have now following suit. So we're going to vote on this. I'm being a little bit presumptuous, because I'm assuming we will vote on this during the consent agenda. So I want to thank all of you for your incredible support as colleagues on all things animal welfare, and wanted to invite Alyssa Krieger, Community Outreach Manager for the MSPCA, for just a minute of remarks, and then Kara Holmquist, the Director of Advocacy for the same. Kara Holmquist first, actually.
Did I get the puppy?
I'm not giving this up.
On behalf of the MSPCA, thank you so much for having us here today. I'm Kara Holmquist, the Director of the MSPCA. I've been at the MSPCA for quite a while and have had the pleasure of working with many of you, and we look forward to working with those of you who are recently elected. Congratulations. We've brought some information that will drop off in your offices about all of our programs at the MSPCA Angel, our hospitals, our teaching programs to train students in high school to become veterinary technicians and veterinary assistants, our shelters around the state, and certainly just up the street in JP, our advocacy work, our law enforcement work, and you'll hear more today from Alyssa about our community outreach programs. We want to be a resource for you and your constituents. We've had really productive times in this chamber since I've been at the MSPCA. It's a pleasure to have been here to testify in many animal issues, dog parks, stray voltage. We even advocated against breed-specific legislation in the early 2000s. And as Counselor O'Malley mentioned, my favorite time here was in 2016, when the council passed and the mayor signed the first in the state bill to ban the commercial sale of puppies, kittens, and rabbits in pet shops. It was amazing day. It was amazing to have Boston be the first municipality, and there's several others. We were in Pittsfield a couple weeks ago, and Pittsfield passed something very similar to Boston, and we know several other municipalities are following Boston's lead at this year's town meetings. So we thank you and the city, and of course, my friend Counselor O'Malley, for that effort and all your efforts on behalf of animals. We also have a couple of staff members that are now serving on the Animal Care Commission in the city, and we just look forward to working with you to better the city and for our animals and our families that live with animals and care about them. I'm going to turn it over to Alyssa, who's going to talk a little bit more about our current efforts and outreach in the communities in Boston.
Hello. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley and Kara. My name is Alyssa Krieger. I'm our Community Outreach Manager. This is Lola, one of the loves of my life. We're so excited to be here today on behalf of the MSPCA's Community Outreach Program. As Counselor O'Malley was saying, 25 years ago, shelters were overcrowded, and spay-neuter initiatives helped to begin decreasing overpopulation for dogs and cats. And as spay and neuter became more popular and low-cost programs became more, made it more accessible, our shelters have seen a really dramatic decrease in the number of animals we have up for adoption each year. In fact, in 2009, we took in nearly 12,500 animals, and we spayed just over 2,000. But in 2019, we spayed 6,698 pets and took in just 6,436. So we're really excited about that trend. Many shelters are taking this opportunity to import animals from out of state to provide animals for adoption, but at the MSPCA, we are committed to helping the animals in Boston first. So after conducting a community assessment in 2018, we began our work of going door-to-door in Dorchester's 02121 zip code. There are not any pet supply stores or vet clinics in that neighborhood, so we now offer free spay and neuter, as well as wellness care, behavior advice, supplies, and just act as a general guide for people who are looking to have questions answered about how to care for their pets. We recognize that the question of providing vet care, whether it's spay-neuter, vaccinations, or emergency care, is not simply a question of whether a person wants those services, but it's also a question of access, and we've been working really hard to take down barriers for the, for our community. We provide free spay and neuter services to all who want them in our target areas, but we understand that cost is not always the only significant barrier preventing families from accessing care. Transportation can be a big barrier, especially with a pet. The 02121 zip code is two miles from our shelter, but it takes at least a half an hour in the car, and many of our clients don't have cars, so it could take up to an hour on public transportation to get those two miles, if you're even allowed to put your pet onto that bus. So we are really proud to provide free transportation for vet appointments to anybody in our neighborhood who needs it. We have provided transportation for 221 animals, including a little chihuahua named Zeus just this morning before we came here. We're also proud to bring vet care into the community by hosting vaccination clinics. We allow families to come right in their neighborhood without having to worry about transportation, to ask vet questions, get vaccinations, and make sure that they have what they need. We're also really proud to have just begun a partnership with the Mildred C. Haley Community in JP. That's 840 units of public housing. We're doing our first free vaccination clinic there this weekend. It's through creating partnerships like that that we're able to help more pets to stay in their homes. We really appreciate the support of the city council, and we look forward to continuing our efforts to ensure pets in Boston have the care that they need and can stay in the loving families with their, in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Could all colleagues please join us for a picture with the folks from the MSPCA? You can hold the reservation if you want.
Because he's not getting it. I'm not getting Margarita's. Excuse us, guys. I'm going to let her hold her dog. There you go.
Thank you, guys. All right, great. Excellent, 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 excellent. Excellent. So I'm going to ask all of my colleagues to take their seats. I know the puppies are adorable. While my colleagues are taking their seats, Madam Clerk, would you please amend the attendance report? I know Counselor Arroyo came in, Counselor Baker, I'm not sure if there are others.
Counselor Flaherty and Counselor Wu.
Okay, wonderful. I also want to acknowledge that we have young people in our chamber. It's really important that we make sure that we include young people in our processes, and so it's amazing to see our young people getting a firsthand glance at city government. I want to acknowledge that we are joined by Grow Girls, which stands for Girls Reflecting Our World. This is a mentorship program with the Boston Police. Thank you for being here. Please give it up for Grow Girls. Wonderful. Thank you for being here. We are also joined, there is a class from Fenway High School, La Clase de Español de Senora Bonilla. This class focuses on civic engagement from Fenway High, so if all the students from Fenway High, if you'd like to stand up, Mrs. Bonilla, if you're here, thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Now, on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0405 and 0406 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0405, message in order to reduce the appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $69,500 to provide funding for the Police Department for the FY20 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and the Boston Police School Traffic Supervisors Association. Docket number 0406, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation of $69,500 to cover the FY20 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and the Boston Police School Traffic Supervisor Association. The terms of the contract are, September 1st, 2019, through August 31st, 2020. The major provisions of the contract include a base wage increase of 2% and a new step effective the first pay period of 2019.
Thank you so much. Docket 0405 and docket 0406 will both be placed in the Committee of Ways and Means. Could we go on to docket 0407?
Thank you. Docket 0407, message in order for an appropriation ordered in the amount of $24,309,000 from the fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Fund Reserve for community preservation projects at the recommendation of the City of Boston Community Preservation Committee, known as CPC. The CPC is recommending a $15,750,000 amount in affordable housing projects, $3,440 in a historic preservation project, and $5,119,000 in recreational use and open space projects.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Madam President, just to footnote here, the city adopted, when the city adopted the CPA, or since it adopted the CPA, 91 projects have been funded across the city, totaling $42 million, and with this new round of funding, the CPA will have generated $67 million for 131 projects across the city devoted to affordable housing, historic preservation, and open space. So I'm excited with this filing. I'm excited to start the formal hearing process with my colleagues, and I think I'll break them down to three separate hearings to evaluate each category of funding, specifically given the fact that we have nine housing projects at over $15 million, there are 16 historic preservation projects at 3.4, and there's 15 open space projects at 5.1. So again, looking forward to council participation, particularly our district councilors who may have affordable housing opportunities, historic preservation opportunities, or open space opportunities. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Flaherty. Docket 0407 will be referred to the Committee of Community Preservation Act. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to docket 0408. Madam President? Excuse me? So I'm being informed by the clerk that in our packet, there is a typo. If you look at docket 0407, toward the end of that, it says, "The CPC is recommending $15 million in affordable housing project and $3,400 in historic preservation," but it should say $3,440,000. So we want to update our records. Thank you, Counselor Baker, for that. This docket will be referred to the Committee on CPA. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counselor Baker, and thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Moving on now to docket 0408.
Docket 0408, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $850,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Boston Regional Intelligence Center earmark awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund upgrading, expanding, and integrating technology and protocols related to anti-terrorism, anti-crime, anti-gang, and emergency responders.
Thank you so much. Docket 0408 will be referred to the Committee of Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to docket 0409.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0409, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $90,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Sustaining Traffic Enforcement Program awarded by the United States Department of Transportation, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0409, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $90,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Sustaining Traffic Enforcement Program awarded by the United States Department of Transportation, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to seek suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0409, and that is a small amount, and as always, BPD is always looking for more funds, but it funds a human capital position that collects data on traffic, crashes, and other things relevant to reducing accidents in the City of Boston. We've gotten this grant in the past, and because it's a low amount, I'm trying to get this money to the department as soon as possible. So as Chair of that committee, I ask for suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0409. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0409. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0409 has been passed. We will move on now to docket 0410. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0410, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $50,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 State Budget earmark awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, to be administered by the Boston Center for Youth and Families. The grant will fund equipment and supplies for after-school and senior programs at the BCYF Nazaro Center.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you now have the floor.
Madam President, I seek to suspend the rules and ask my colleagues to pass for a vote. This grant would fund equipment and supplies for the after-school programs at the BCYF Nazaro Center, and I think they'd benefit from getting those funds as soon as possible. Therefore, I ask to suspend the rules and pass it by a vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Braden seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0410. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0410 has passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0411?
Docket 0411, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount not to exceed $50,000 in the form of a grant for the Animal Care Fund awarded by donor group to be administered by the Department of Parks and Recreation. The grant will fund the maintenance of the City of Boston Animal Shelter and assistance with medical care for sick or injured animals whose owners are Boston residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. There's a definite theme to today, and I am here for it. This is a, I rise to ask for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0411. This is a mechanism that will allow for folks to, the city, and particularly the city's animal shelter, to take advantage of donations that are often presented. I wanted to acknowledge Steve Bickerton for the Parks Department for his great work on this, setting up a mechanism, again, in place, because we all know folks love to help out, or many folks do love to help out animals, support it. This is a great resource. We have terrific partnerships with organizations like MSPCA and ARL and the Humane Society of the United States, and this is just a, a way to allow for better support and better donations to be spent on animal care custody and control. So delighted to ask for suspension of the rules and adoption of this docket. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0411. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0411 has passed. We will move on to docket 0412. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0412, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand a donation of Lift Discount Codes from Cut 50, a national nonprofit focused on criminal justice reform. The value of the code is not to exceed $5,000 and will be used by the Office of Returning Citizens to support returning citizens who are facing transportation challenges in the City of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I seek suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0412. It's pretty self-explanatory, a very small amount that we want to give to the Office of Returning Citizens, who's doing incredible work as we welcome citizens back from being incarcerated. And we know that one of the biggest challenges they face is transportation and getting to their appointments, getting important documents, to obviously get back on their feet. So this is a small amount that I seek suspension of the rules in passage to get to that office right away. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0412. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0412 has been passed. Now we will move on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if we could read docket 0413 through docket 0418, we'll read those together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0413, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of January 15, 2020. Docket number 0414, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of January 29, 2020. Docket number 0415, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of February 5, 2020. Docket number 0416, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modifications to the Government Center Urban Renewal Plan, project number NASR-35, with respect to parcel 11. Docket number 0417, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modifications to the South Cove, excuse me, Cove Urban Renewal Plan, project number NASR-92, with respect to parcel R2 and new parcel R2B. Docket number 0411... respect to parcel R two and new parcel R two B. Docket number zero four one eight, communication was received from Lawrence S. DeCara, Chairman of the Audit Committee, updating the City Council on their meetings held with independent auditors, KPMG LLP, for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets zero four one three through zero four one eight will be placed on file. We will now move on to matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket zero two six eight?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket zero two six eight, order for hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty Boston Public Schools transportation budget.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee held a hearing on Monday, February twenty-fourth, at three-thirty PM. We were joined by Counselor Asabi George, who was the lead sponsor of the hearing, as well as Council President Kim Janey, Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, Counselor Matt O'Malley, and Counselor Liz Breeden. We also had communications from Counselors Flynn and Campbell, who weren't able to attend. I think it was a very productive hearing. We heard from Ed Pesh, the Assistant Director of Transportation at BPS, Sam DePina, the Interim Operations Director, and also Charlene Bryner, interim Chief of Staff. So, you know, it's a, it's a big challenge, and I think we haven't seen as much progress as we've hoped over the years. And so, I just want, though, to, to yield the floor to my colleague and the lead sponsor, just for some further remarks. Counselor Asabi George.
Counselor Asabi George?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to our Chair of Ways and Means, Counselor Bach, for holding and chairing this annual BPS transportation budget hearing this past Monday. At the hearing, BPS Transportation insisted that the district has not gone over budget in the last thirty years. While this is technically true about the district, the same is not true for the Transportation Department, and which is why we have this hearing, that there are very regularly, in my time in office and in the time of many of our colleagues in office, the transportation budget within BPS regularly goes over budget. My concern is that these cost overruns are taken from other services that should be available to our students in our schools across the district. BPS does, Transportation does shoulder important costs associated with transporting some of our more expensive students and our riders across the district. And although the theme of what they shared, we all applaud and regard, and Counselor O'Malley spoke to this specifically, around our concerns around safety and that the safety of our students while being transported is critical, that we're looking at on-time performance for our students to get to school on time and to be returned safely home or to their drop-off spot on time. But we're also looking at cost savings, because for me, those costs, cost savings can be redirected and rebooted to our classrooms for student-facing services. But as we looked at this, we learned a great deal about the efforts that the Transportation Department is doing around supporting special ed students, some of our students who are the most needy and require certain services and supports while being transported to and from schools, that we are burdened really by some expensive costs that the state requires us to take on around transporting non-BPS students, whether they're attending private or charter or parochial schools, but also out-of-district placements, as well as our students experiencing homelessness. It's a, it's an expensive line, line item that we need to do that work, but we need to make sure that we're able to really be thoughtful about how we're spending our money and making sure that our kids are in school on time every single day. So, it's important for this body, especially as we prepare for budget hearings in the coming months, that we're prepared and aware of some of the burdens on this budget for our school department. So, thank you to Counselor Bach and those that were in attendance for your thoughtful questions and the, I think, really thoughtful and robust conversation that happened on Monday. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Docket zero two six eight will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket zero two three three?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket zero two three three, a home role petition for special law regarding an act relative to the zoning Board of Appeal.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Edwards, who is Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, we had a robust hearing, almost four hours long, where we discussed how we're going to reform the ZBA. And I say that with, and with very much, with a great deal of excitement, because we, there was overall consensus in the room that we are going to reform and that we are going to change the ZBA. And I say that very excitedly, that the administration is part of helping to make that change happen. And so, and several people had, many people showed up at four o'clock hearing and stayed throughout the entire night to give so many wonderful suggestions on how we could do that. I want to thank my colleagues, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Wu, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Baker, and Counselor Bach for attending. I also, we also had notes from Counselor Asabi George and Counselor Campbell, who wanted to be there but were unable to attend. I want to note from the administration, Chief Jerome Smith attended and testified, John Towel, who is Special Counsel Policy, also attended, and Dionne Irish, who is the Commissioner for ISD, they came and testified on behalf of the administration. Majority of the testimony, and it was intentionally so, came from the community, where we had several rounds of individuals come up to the podiums and make suggestions. Community groups that attended that are worth noting was the Boston Society of Architects, Greater Boston Real Estate Board, and the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council also came and testified, and had, and also submitted written testimony as well. We discussed three major components of the pending home rule. First, the actual language, the executive order and how we might be able to expand additional things to do, and also overall establishing, or whether this goes far enough to repair the trust of the public in this administration. There are many things down in the detail that we could discuss, but just to hit some highlights, because ultimately, I think it's really important for those who couldn't attend. A lot of testimony in terms of the home rule was about who gets to sit on the board and the positions there. We discussed the seven current positions, whether some should go away, and also what ones should be added. In terms of also standards for variances, we also looked at whether the geography and whether a person is practicing in Boston should be able to sit on the ZBA. So, we're still looking at that position. That was the crux of that discussion. With regards to the executive order and action that the administration, administration could take now, I have to say that there was wonderful suggestions. So, I personally would love to see an executive order two point oh, because there's so many things still left out there, including looking at tracking by district of how any variances are going out there, multilingual outreach, looking at the three hundred buffer zone for Butters notices, training of the members of the board, and honestly, there were so many other things in terms of also notification about deferrals and how the online portal by project will have the positive and negative comments from the community, that they will also track the IAG promises for the, for that project, all in one location online, and so that we'd actually have, we'd have the historical knowledge and institutional knowledge online. So, I'm very excited about that. But in terms of the trust, that's still, that's still an issue for many people and wondering if this goes far enough. The H Street project came up as one of the concerns about how that had not helped with the trust. And the focus of this hearing was overall reforms regardless of H Street. But it was, it was worth noting that that did come up, and there were several questions about how and whether this, this particular conversation was going to address those issues. It seems very well, Madam President, that there will probably have to be a separate hearing on that particular issue and controversy. Because there's so many things to get done, and it looks like we have willing partner at all levels, I'm going to ask that the staying committee, Madam President, and that we schedule this for a working session. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. Docket zero two three three will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. We will now move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket zero four one nine?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket zero four one nine, Counselors Braden and Edwards offer the following order for hearing regarding zoning variances.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you also to my colleague, Counselor Edwards, for co-sponsoring this order. I want to propose a docket, docket one four one nine, the need for a hearing to fully examine how members of the BPDA and the Board of Appeals determine the need for zoning relief and recommended, recommendations defined as variances. Development in our neighborhoods is governed by the Boston Zoning Code, which establishes the rules that implement neighborhood planning objectives and sets forth the shape, density, and use of development allowed in a particular area, the goal of protecting neighborhoods from development and building uses that would be, that would not conform with the characteristics of the neighborhood. In my twenty years of activism in Alston Brighton, I have attended countless community meetings around the reshaping of the Alston Brighton neighborhood, and I'm sure many of my colleagues have experienced this in their own neighborhoods across the city. And through those meetings, I'm in awe at the devotion of our community members who turn up week after week, multiple times a week often, to try and make sure that our neighborhood continue, neighborhoods continue to be livable, economically, and democra, demographically diverse, and a place where families can live and grow. And it seems that the liberal granting of variances in many of our residential neighborhoods incentivizes speculation, which in turn drives gentrification and displacement from many, from many of our long-term residents. And in many cases, anonymous investors and speculators purchase two and three family homes for cash, knowing full well that they will be permitted to demolish those homes, displace the tenants, and build units that will not be affordable for the folks who live in the neighborhood. Last year alone, over nine hundred variances were approved by the Board of Appeals. This recent trend in granting excessive variances incentivizes speculative investment by cash buyers and drives housing inflation in our neighborhood. Therefore, I ask call for a hearing regarding zoning variances. I must state that I am not anti-development. I, I really want to get us away from a trend that displaces our, gentrifies and displaces our neighborhood, folks from our neighborhoods. And I welcome a hearing on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Braden. Is there anyone else looking to speak on the matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and the Chair. Docket zero four one nine will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Moving on to docket zero four two zero. Madam Clerk, could you please read the docket?
I'm sorry. Docket zero four two one, two zero, I'm sorry. Counselor Braden offer the following order for hearing to review restrictions on development abutting parkland and parkways.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just finding my papers here. As most of you know, I'm an environmentalist, and when viewing development, I, I look at the harm, is this mine? I, I look at the harms or benefits which could be done by, on the surrounding environment of any development. In, in a district with the least amount of green space in the entire city, I'm especially cognizant of how my neighborhood has been impacted by development. It is well-recognized that our ability to mitigate the impacts of climate change is greatly enhanced by, by the health and resilience of our wetlands, urban wilds and green spaces. Erosion and degradation of these areas impacts our ability to manage stormwater runoff, limit heat island effects and impacts on air quality. Therefore, with the encroachment of various new developments around DCR, parklands, and parkways, we need to examine, and other green spaces, we need to examine what restrictions exist for projects abutting our precious green space. We are in the midst of an unfolding environmental disaster. Therefore, it is imperative that, that we take all necessary measures to protect and preserve the integrity of these valuable resources, which are so essential to the quality of our life and the sustainability of our beautiful city. Therefore, I call for a hearing to review restrictions on development abutting parkland and parkways. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Docket zero four two zero will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We'll now move on to docket zero four two one. Oh, yes, excuse me, thank you. Would anyone like to speak on the matter or add their name to docket this? We're still on docket zero four two zero. Wonderful. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and please also add the Chair. Docket zero four two zero will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Now, we will move on to docket zero four two one. Thank you.
Docket zero four two one, Counselor Baker offer the following order for hearing regarding regulations of the taxi industry.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm filing this hearing, hearing in an effort to examine the city's taxi regulations, to discuss the potential need to change how we regulate our taxis in, in the city. Taxi owners and operators were able to receive some relief from their, if they're able to relieve, if cab owners and operators are able to receive some relief on the hackney regulations, we may be able to rebuild this business. I'm not totally confident, but I think we can. Counselor Campbell's been involved in this fight with me quite a bit. So, a brief, little bit of backstory, taxi medallions went from anywhere three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand. TNCs came in, Uber and Lyft came in, and basically decimated that whole, that whole industry. Most of the industry were, were immigrant, immigrant drivers that took every bit of anything that they had, their credit, their cash, everything, put it up to buy these, to buy these medallions. Then comes along Uber and Lyft. The medallions are basically worthless now. We've had people in my office in meetings, grown men, sitting crying about what's going on in their industry and trying to pay for their families. It's, it's pretty bad. But I think if we look at this thoughtfully, we, we grant some, some relief in four oh three. Four oh three is the hackney regulations that are governed by the Police Department. If we loosen some of those regulations, maybe put the taxi industry on more of a, more of a, more of a level footing with, with the TNCs, I think we can potentially get some people back in business. The Police Department has hundreds of medallions literally just sitting on a shelf now that people are trying to sell. It, it's actually probably a good business plan. You can get a hackney license, you can get a hackney medallion for thirty-five thousand dollars now. If you talk to, now, I've probably been in Uber and Lyft, I could count my rides on two hands. I've probably been in seven of them. If, if, if you talk to Uber and Lyft drivers, they're not sure of what they're going to put in their pocket at the end of the night. But the, the person that rents a taxi for the night, he or she knows that if I give you the owner two hundred dollars and I work, I work the rest of that night and I earn eight hundred, I'm going to put six hundred, five hundred, six hundred in my pocket. They know they're going to do that. So, I think we have an opportunity here to think differently about, about this industry, give them a little bit of support, give them a little bit of help, and try and rebuild that taxi industry, and try and help those families that, that have been really, really hurt by Uber and Lyft. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'd like to ask my name to please be added, but I, I want to say thank you to Counselor Baker for offering this. You know, during difficult times in our city, taxi drivers were always there for us. And as, as Counselor Baker mentioned, there were a lot of immigrant workers that were cab drivers. And now that the city is booming, there's, there seems like there's no place left for our cab drivers. So, I want to say thank you to Counselor Baker for standing up for them, and Counselor Campbell as well, and, and the body. But, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, when our cab drivers were, were playing a key role in our city, it was a very difficult time in our city, but especially for our immigrant community. But cab drivers really helped make our city, helped strengthen our city. So, I'm, I'm proud of Counselor Baker for offering this, and just want to offer my support too for the cab drivers. Again, they come from immigrant families, they work hard, they don't make a lot of money, but there should be a place in Boston for all cab drivers. So, thank you to Counselor Baker and Counselor Campbell as well.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counselor Baker for filing the hearing order and for his leadership, and his, actually, his staff as well, with respect to this issue. It is, you know, we've had meetings for years with hard-working, dedicated residents and, and folks who are just looking to get ahead to support their families. Most of the folks we've been meeting with are immigrants. Most of the folks we've been meeting with are immigrants, most are from communities of color. And so, this issue frankly is about justice. At the end of the day, the ride-sharing companies are within the authority of the state. Here, we control the taxi industry, so how do we, at the end of the day, not just make it a level playing field, but right some past wrongs? And what I mean by that is, we knew that with technology and with innovation, Uber, Lyft, that these types of companies were going to be coming down the pipeline, we did nothing to sort of shift rates or to change things to allow our taxi drivers to keep up. And so, the question is now, how do we support them? How do we do what's fair? How do we do what's just? And they have innovative ideas and solutions they've brought to us that are fantastic. So, this is an opportunity to talk about those in a public way, not just in sort of some of the closed-door meetings with us and the administration, and to move things forward. And I will tell you, it is really heart-wrenching to hear some of their stories of people who have cashed in everything, bet their lives on this industry to get their children through college, to buy a home, to build wealth, not only for their family but in communities. So, this is our opportunity to support them in some way. I think there are some good ideas out there, but I look forward to having a robust conversation. And I want to applaud Counselor Baker for taking the lead on this. Thank you, Madam President.
And you would like to add your name?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Mejia, and Counselor Wu, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0421 will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. We will now move on to docket 0422.
Docket 0422, Counselor Flynn offered the following resolution, recognizing African-American veteran achievements during the Black History Month.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, may I request that Counselor Edwards be an original cosponsor?
Seeing no objections, Counselor Edwards is added as an original cosponsor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I filed this resolution to celebrate African-American veterans' achievement during Black History Month. Incredible contributions, service, and sacrifice as well of their families throughout our country's history, from World War I to the present. I just came back yesterday from a Disabled American Veterans Conference in Washington, had the opportunity to talk to African-American veterans throughout the country, more listening to them, listening to their stories of sacrifice, hard work, service. They fought in World War I, they fought in the American Revolution, World War II. They got their arms, their legs blown off in World War I, they came back to our country, didn't enjoy the rights to vote, or they were treated with disrespectfully by our country. And here they are, they're serving our country, serving our freedom and their families as well, sacrificing our military families. That's why I asked Counselor Edwards to be an original cosponsor, because she knows very well the role of the military families play in our society as well. World War II veterans, Tuskegee Airmen, contributed significantly to our country. In fact, one of my good friends, Willis Saunders, who was a Boston Police Superintendent, was a Tuskegee Airmen, was a Boston Police Superintendent. His father was a World War I veteran. I had the opportunity to visit the Historic 12 Baptist Church. They have a 16-over African-American Veterans Group that meets at their church once a month, and they talk about what services are available to African-American veterans. The COTA post in Mattapan on Blue Hill Avenue, the oldest American Legion post in the country, incredible work they do as well. Our Police Commissioner, Commissioner Ross, talks often about him being raised by military community, and the contributions of our African-American veterans is something that the Commissioner is very proud of as well. So, I'm asking this body to suspend and pass this resolution, recognizing the incredible contributions, sacrifices, dedication, services of our African-American veterans, and the heroic service they played in our country's history. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Flynn. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you again to my friend and colleague, Counselor Flynn, for adding me to this resolution. As Counselor Flynn noted, I do come from a military background, and it's important not only that we recognize African-American veterans in Black History Month, but knowing that, period, all the freedoms that we have today, all of the things that we celebrate in terms of my ability to be even here on the City Council, our ability to be in this country, to speak freely, all of those things were paid for by veterans and are celebrated year-round. The fact that we're celebrating or recognizing African-American veterans is particular because so many of the freedoms that we celebrate today, they were denied despite dying for this country. My great uncle, Solomon Mangram, for example, I didn't even know he existed until after his sister, my grandmother, died. And I bring this story up because he served in North Korea, and he died in Heartbreak Hill. He served in North Korea, and it was one of the first sets of African-Americans to serve in an integrated troop. And I only know this because after going through my grandmother's things after she had passed away, we found all of these letters from a man named Walter Schultz. Walter Schultz is a German man who lives in Michigan, Brownsville, Michigan, population 800. So, I wondered why Mr. Schultz was writing to my grandmother all these years. Mr. Schultz, whose parents were actually German immigrants who escaped from World War II, served with my great uncle, Uncle Solomon. He saw my uncle in North Korea when they were taking on Heartbreak Hill, and they were told they would have it done in a week. It took them 30 days, they had no idea what they were doing, and they were coming uphill. My uncle and another African-American man helped to lead the charge of that hill, and unfortunately, many of their colleagues took fire, Bob Finley being one of them. My great uncle and his African-American colleague carried down Bob Finley, went back up the hill, said that there were still more people, carried down another man, and then went back up the hill and never came back. They carried down their colleagues regardless of their color because they were there to defend this country. I know this because after seeing those letters, I went to the Google, I found out where Mr. Schultz lived, I found him in the phone book. For the young people here, it's a booklet with numbers, not just in your phones, but they exist, and they exist in Brownsville, Michigan still. I had the pleasure to speak with Mr. Schultz on the phone. I had the pleasure to learn from him that it wasn't him who was saved, it was Bob Finley. He then gave me Mr. Finley's number, and I spoke with him on the phone. I brought tears to his eyes because he said, "I always wondered why I got to live in Solomon. Solomon had to die. I've been doing my best to lead two lives. I've been doing my best to do right by Solomon's memory." He then sent me his resume, sent me articles that he had done. He'd become a pastor, he had done so many things, raised these children, and all he wanted to do was be impressed by my family that my great uncle had died and never got to see these things. He was 23-years-old when my great uncle died. When my great-grandmother found out about her child dying, she grieved herself to death and died early. My grandmother, his sister, doesn't talk about painful things. So, I didn't really hear a lot about Mr. Solomon until I saw those letters. After Bob died, I flew out to Brownsville, Michigan, well, actually Detroit, and then drove two hours in the dark to a small farm that Mr. Schultz lives in. And every Veterans Day, Memorial Day, I call up Walter still in his 90s, just to say hello. It is that kind of special connection that the military brings to families, that goes across culture and colors and ways, that I don't know many people can understand. Mr. Schultz and I politically probably could be on the most extremes in terms of where we stand, in terms of our political votes and who we are, but I would not know about my family, my history, and my heritage if it wasn't for his letters over the years to my grandmother. After World War... Excuse me. So, they signed some affidavits. I have the story for sure, and I believe he was recommended, my great uncle, for a Bronze Star for his heroic activities. I have to bring up that his colleague was African-American. I still, we tried to find who he was, who also died with my great uncle. We don't know who it was, who came down the hill and saved Bob Finley's life. But I had the pleasure and honor to speak with Mr. Finley before he passed away, and then I had the pleasure and honor to continue to speak with Mr. Schultz. So, I want to thank them for their service, for serving this country, but also giving me part of my heritage. My mother, as you know, then joined the military in 1973, at the end of Vietnam, and I was, well, I was born into the service, and my mother took my sister and I around the world. It's just important to recognize, not just the bad things, and gosh knows, there are a lot of bad things, but for better or for worse, the military has done more with integration, for better and for worse, than most institutions. So, I'm here to recognize not only my great uncle, but the many countless, nameless individuals who died on hills, saving their colleagues regardless of their color, knowing in 19... It was 1952 where he died. I'm getting my dates mixed up, I apologize. It was the 1950s in Korea. My uncle probably could not enjoy the same liberties, freedoms that he was dying for. So, this is for Uncle Solomon, this is for everyone else who died nameless, but died for this incredible country. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for sharing that incredibly moving story. Is there anyone else who would like to add their name or speak to this resolution? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and please also add the Chair. Counselor Flynn and Counselor Edwards seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0422. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0422 has been adopted. We will now move on to docket 0423. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0... Excuse me, docket 0423. Counselor Mejia offered the following order for hearing regarding the economic empowerment of income-adjusted parking tickets.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, for giving me the opportunity to speak. So, yeah, quickly about this particular hearing that I am proposing. For me, everything that I've done has always been about my lived experience, and when I was lucky enough to get hired in this position, I realized that I had $159 worth of tickets that I needed to pay. And let me tell you that I was in shock, and I didn't want to start this job owing a debt to the city. So, I scrambled up a little bit of change and paid my debt to the city. But it was during that process that I realized that if I was able to do that with the limited resources that I had, I started thinking about those who have not, and started hearing about stories of other people who were struggling to make their ends meet while getting a $40 parking ticket that then turned into a $90 ticket. And then, what happens when you're struggling to juggle all your finances? Then you realize that you are either deciding whether or not you're going to pay a parking ticket or put food on your table. And not to say that I'm here to break any laws or, you know, challenge the system, but I do think that we have an opportunity to really explore how we can make parking tickets a little bit more reflective of the financial situations that a lot of our residents are facing here in the city of Boston today. So, I'd like to propose a hearing order to hear how we can examine ways that we could do income-adjusted, where we're probably looking at your income. So, basically, perhaps maybe you bring in your income tax and pay a sliding scale for your ticket, or exploring other ways that we can help support people who are dealing with financial hardships in the city of Boston. For me, I ran on a platform about socioeconomic justice. As someone who lived a life of poverty, I think it's really important for us to look at these issues from a lens of making sure that people who have not continue not to have nothing, but to really be mindful of how we can be more equitably when it comes to parking. So, I would like to host the hearing order to explore what can we do to address this issue in a way that uplifts the voices of those who are struggling financially in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Mejia. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership in this analysis. The way in which we integrate with individuals, whether it's through a ticket or whether it's through hearings, which we'll discuss soon, needs to come from an equity lens. I can say right now, I don't think I'm there yet with whether we should have reduced parking tickets based off of your income, but I certainly think that we should see how this is impacting individuals through several ways. One, I think one balancing act is the Ticket Not Tow program. I think having your car towed especially impacts people who are impoverished in a way that maybe someone who isn't, I mean, the fact that your car is then towed far away, and then there's a private actor that is charging a different rate at the tow lot for you to get your car back because they took it from you, and now you're paying almost a rent. There's an issue, I think. We need to analyze with that and look at how people are towing, how they make money in ways... If you don't have the money to pay that, then I would say especially, you're in a position that only hurts you more. I think we also... I had a case where a woman who was put in a shelter here by the state, she couldn't afford Boston insurance, so she kept her insurance, and so her car wasn't registered here, and we put a boot on her car. That was the only income she had. She drove Lyft and was trying to one day raise enough money to get her kids back. So, again, you know, how we piled on with somebody. I would also actually think that there's... I don't know if anyone's paid online before, but when you pay online versus paying in person, you have to pay a fee, a transaction fee. I don't like that. I don't like having to pay to pay. And I think the city... I know it's because of the way the system's set up, literally, the system online is, but we're paying a fee to pay, my fee. So, I wonder if that's a real, fair, equitable way of looking at things. And finally, another form of equity, is there any way to go on an interest-free payment plan? So that, yes, I'm assessed $40. I may not have it all at once, but can I pay it off in three months with no interest? I think that there's ways in which we can look at that. But I'm not there yet on saying we shouldn't assess everybody $40. But I do think the other pylons that impact people, I absolutely want to have that discussion. So, thank you so much, Counselor Mejia, for your leadership.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Campbell.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to sign on, I apologize.
Oh, so, yes, you're going to add your name. We're going to add Counselor Edwards. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to applaud Counselor Mejia for bringing this forward. I think it's an important conversation. I have personally helped constituents pay tickets that they were unable to pay after demonstrating to me and folks in my office the financial hardship that it is to pay a ticket. So, these are folks who are willing and would pay, but have... Something has happened in their life personally where they're unable to pay. I think we can get really creative, maybe for those particular constituents, to come up with other ways to pay, whether it is an interest-free plan, volunteering, some form of customer service or something like that. But the fact that you have constituents who show up here, and in one case, I think one woman made the rounds to all of our offices in tears because she could not afford to pay, and even had documentation to prove that. She was laid off, lost her job. And so, how do we work with folks who want to do the right thing but are financially unable to do so? So, I think it's really important that we have this conversation. And to my surprise, I couldn't believe that there was nothing in place currently to help those constituents deal with those issues. And then adding in the tow piece, just growing up here, that was always a major issue in certain neighborhoods in particular, where you struggle to find parking, and you come out and your car is gone, and you have a ticket on your car, then you go to the tow lot on Frontage Road, and you pay some crazy amount to get your car out, is an extreme hardship. There has to be a better way to help constituents make a mistake or something like that to just do better. So, looking forward to the hearing, look forward to that. Please add my name, and thank you for bringing forth the hearing order. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. The Chair now recognizes Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to commend the maker, the at-large counsel for Dorchester. While I certainly appreciate the intent and the impetus of this hearing order, I'm not sure that it is the right approach. I want to offer a little perspective and history on how this body has had an active role as it relates to the setting of the schedule of fines. One was alluded by the District One Counselor. We worked with the Boston Transportation Department on a piloted program in Charlestown several years ago, which would change what was happening for resident-only parking... Excuse me, street cleaning, street sweeping, where you would be towed, you'd be assessed a relatively small ticket and then towed, which would run $100, $120 on top of that. As someone who used to live in a place without a driveway, I was the victim of that several times. So, by increasing the violation schedule for parking in a street cleaning block of time and removing... time, and removing the tow fee, we actually saved taxpayers, those who, you know, would fall victim to it, a significant amount of money. Moreover, working with the former District Eight City Counselor, there was an issue around the, in the Fenway neighborhood, near Fenway Park, where I think it was $25 violation for parking in a resident-only zone. As we all know, parking at a Red Sox game is going to be close to $40 or $50. You had a not insignificant number of people who would rather pay a smaller ticket than, than pay double it for a resident, for a private parking. So there has been some thought and deliberation. Again, appreciate the intent behind this hearing order, and certainly recognize the fact that it is very expensive to be poor, and we're seeing the high cost of being poor particularly, and we're feeling it acutely in Boston. I think a better approach might be looking at some of the causes as it relates to free public transportation, as championed by the At-Large Counselor from Rosendale. Looking at better and more creative ways to deal with parking and to support our business districts. Looking at, at certain meter parking in certain areas as well. Looking at alternate ways of transportation, such as an increased bike network, bike shares, electric scooters, electric multimodal vehicles as well. So again, it's a good conversation to have. I'm not sure that changing, and the other thing that really gives me pause as it relates to creating income-adjusted tickets is the enforcement piece and how we would actually make that determination does seem very, very difficult. But it's important conversation to have, it's what this body does. We, we don't always tackle the issue, the, the easy issues, but we tackle the complicated ones and the ones that certainly have an effect. So appreciate the maker for, for her work on this.
Thank you so much, Counselor O'Malley. Is anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Wu, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0423 will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. We'll move on now to Docket 0424.
Docket 0424, Counselor Mejia and Wu offered the following order for hearing discussing the status of late-night MBTA service in greater Boston.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam President. So, this one relates to the fact that there are a lot of folks who are third shift workers who can't get to and from work on the MBTA. So I'd like to propose a hearing order to see how we can go about providing late-night service, that also, not just for late-night shift workers, but also an opportunity for folks who may want to hang out a little bit later in the city of Boston. I think that will help.
Thank you so much, Counselor Mejia. Counselor Wu, are you looking to speak? The Chair now recognizes Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the lead sponsor for her leadership on this, and I'm excited for the new energy around it. This is an issue that has economic implications across multiple levels and is, has been frustrating because the city council's been part of the conversations for years as well. We need not just for the MBTA to recognize their role in facilitating an investment into the larger benefits that we would reap across the economy, that we would be able to support third-shift workers who have no other way of getting to work that is affordable at our hospitals, at restaurants, and in the hospitality sector. But most of all, people need stability, and they need whatever we are putting before them to be reliable, affordable, and accessible. We have to think about that in terms of the time of day that it's available to. So thank you so much, Counselor Mejia, for your leadership.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
This is something near and dear to my heart, as many of the folks from East Boston had called for this and used the late-night service and wanted it to be expanded. In many cases, they were working, either restaurant workers or cleaners in offices overnight, and needed access to free, or, excuse me, low-cost transportation such as the bus. Now, while we do have the late-night bus, we just had a conversation about how Lyft and Uber are taking over, have taken up too much possibly of our transportation needs, and we already have congested streets. So why wouldn't we want to expand the tee at night so that people can get on the tee versus getting and losing two, three hours of work, especially if you're paid by the hour, to get in an Uber to go home? The other thing I would also just add to this conversation, and I look forward to this hearing, is the fact that we're going to be expanding our ferry service in East Boston. We're hoping it could, yes, we're going to get a ferry, and that would go from, from East Boston down to, we hope, at least the seaport. But, and I'll give credit to credits due, my predecessor, City Council Diane Monica brought in the first, not the first, but brought back the ferry the first time in the 1990s. So I'm hoping that part of this late-night service could possibly include the ferry that we're going to bring in as well.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also just want to commend the makers and say, four years ago, I was one of only a handful of people who managed to actually attend the extremely hastily-scheduled hearings that the tee held, three in a 24-hour period before canceling late-night service. It was January of 2016. None of the third-shift workers that have been mentioned today were able to be at these, you know, noon, four o'clock, and noon again hearings in Boston and Cambridge. You know, the handful of people who could make it out were people like me who had more flexible schedules. I was, you know, at age 26, a fairly frequent user of the late-night tee service, and, and, you know, stood up to just say, this is something that we need. It's something we need for our economy, it's something we need for our most formidable citizens, and it's something that, the way that the tee was looking at it at the time was that it wasn't paying for itself. But there are many hours of the system day throughout the week that don't pay for themselves on that kind of a basis. That's why we talk about a public good, right? We provide it because, yes, it costs us something, but it also benefits us as a whole public. And when you just think about, when you think about the, you know, jobs that you enable people to have, the income you enable them to know they're going to have, the, on the other side, the people who know they can stay out somewhere because of having that regularity of knowing the tee is still running, it just changes the whole game. And so I think, you know, this isn't, the fact that that process was so rushed and frankly so not consultative was part of what enabled people, including people in this room, to advocate for the return of the late-night buses. So I think we've already shown how continuing to push on this issue can win us small victories, but I absolutely think the council needs to be continuing to push on this, and that we really just can't settle for the abbreviated service that we, that we're currently living with.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Braden? Counselor Bach, did you want to add your name? Counselor Bach, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor O'Malley, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0424 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We'll now move on to Docket 0425.
Docket 0425, Counselors Mejia and Edwards offered the following order for hearing on public hearings as they relate to government accountability and accessibility.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So, before I even say anything, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for always adding additional layers to the things that I'm proposing. I think that your expertise and the lens that you bring really help articulate the things that I want to move forward. So I just wanted to say thank you to each of you for always bringing so much to these discussions. I really do appreciate that. So, the hearing on public hearings, that was my big thing. I always said that this was the first thing that I was going to propose, and I think that we have an amazing opportunity here to really create an opportunity for folks to be more engaged in civics, to be more engaged in the decision-making process that happens here in City Hall. And I'm proposing a hearing on public hearings to really explore how we can remove barriers to engagement. And having spoken with Michelle Wu, Counselor Michelle Wu, not too long ago, I know that Yana Pressley, former city councilor Yana Pressley, and she had talked about how we can provide childcare. So that's one of the things that I think as a single mom has been my thing, is how can we make it more accessible to folks to participate in these type of hearings? So I'm looking forward to hosting a hearing on hearings, to figure out how we can remove barriers to engagement, and explore ways to make City Hall more accountable and accessible to those who we wish to serve. So I'm looking forward to hosting a conversation around that and working with my co-sponsor, City Councilor Lydia Edwards, on that.
Thank you so much, Counselor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to add to some of the comments, I'm excited about this conversation because accessibility means accountability. It means you can actually participate and tell your government where it's getting things right and where it's not. One of the things we certainly need, however, is data to back up a lot of what we are talking about in terms of who has access to the city right now. While, one of the great lines of questioning yesterday came from Counselor Arroyo discussing who is actually at the Butters meetings? What do they look like? What are the languages that they speak? Are we really actually reflecting the diversity in even any of these many conversations that are at the grassroots level? But are they really inclusive at that level? One of the issues is, of course, how do you capture that data of who shows up? Well, I will say, I had the pleasure of working at the Office of Housing Stability, and one way in which the city does capture data is when they call in to 311 by zip code. You would be able to see, and we were able to see at the time, which zip codes call the city of Boston the most. Not necessarily by issue, but certainly who felt empowered to say, hey, I need this, hey, I need this, stop doing this. And those, those zip codes luckily came from Counselor Bach's district, where they felt very empowered to call the city of Boston because they have amazing city counselors, because they know they're going to do their job. But very few were coming from East Boston, and fewer came from Mattapan, and you can break down by, by district. Again, I'm not breaking down the issues or feeling that they didn't feel heard on emergencies or, or police or anything like that, I'm just saying who picked up the phone the most. So with that kind of data, at this kind of hearing, we can only make ourselves more accessible. I would also like to add, one thing maybe the city council could consider, and our budget asks going forward, is how do we make this particular Wednesday moment or any of our hearings more accessible? By that I mean online. Not necessarily in a Facebook Live chat type way, but how can people be talking to us while we're talking if they're not here? So could they submit things via email to the clerk or to the person who's actually, to central staff at the time, so that we can get, you know, I don't want it to be a Facebook Live with a bunch of hearts and emojis, but I do think people should be able to be submitting questions to us in live time. So how do we do that? Can they call in? So I just want to put that out there for us with what we might be able to control. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, could you please add my name? Madam President, also, I just want to thank the, the makers for bringing this to, to the floor. And as Counselor Edwards mentioned, language access is also a critical part of this, especially for our residents that may not speak English. Just as an example, we're seeing the, the ongoing issue nationally, internationally of the coronavirus. I couldn't do my job effectively as a city councilor if I didn't have people on my staff, dedicated staff that, that speak Cantonese and Mandarin. I'm getting, my office is getting flooded with calls from residents, actually throughout Massachusetts, asking what is happening on the coronavirus, what public health is doing. And I'm lucky to have a staff that can speak Cantonese and that can speak Mandarin, and they're talking to residents across Boston and Massachusetts on, on this issue. So I'm very thankful for that. Also, Madam President, as it relates to access issues, making sure that persons with disabilities have equal access to all city services is, is critical, including our, our seniors, making sure that every level of government is available to them. And that's something that we'll continue to work on, and as, as the Vice Chair that worked closely with Counselor Zecham on disability rights issues and with the entire body. Looking forward to that conversation, especially on language access and access for those persons with disabilities and our seniors as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Wu, Counselor O'Malley, and please add the Chair? I'm really excited about this hearing order and about the work we are doing, so I just want to echo your sentiments. I'm very grateful to serve with all of you. Docket 0425 will be referred to the Committee on Rules and Administration. We'll now move on to Docket 0426. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0426, Counselor Wu offered the following resolution in support of the 100% Renewable Energy Act.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Wu.
Madam President, could I make a motion to substitute in new language? We had, there's an oversight and we neglected to print out Counselor O'Malley as an original co-sponsor.
Hearing, seeing no objections? Yes. Can you make sure that we get that, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is a resolution in support of the bill up at the State House filed by Representatives Sean Garbley and Marjorie Decker, House Bill 2836, and it would require that Massachusetts join states across the country in moving us on a specific timeline to 100% renewable energy. You have heard both of the sponsors of this expound profusely on just how urgent this matter is, just how much we need to do at every level of government, and certainly for all the good work that we're doing at the city of Boston, we very much need to support efforts at the state level to accelerate the transition, to do it justly, to make sure that communities who are most affected have a seat at the table. So I am very proud to partner with Ben Hellestein from Environment Mass and all of the good work that that organization is doing, mobilizing, organizing, and getting the grassroots out, because the issues of climate justice are the issues that will define every other challenge that we're facing, and how prepared we are to, to face them, how livable our world will be, and how equitable the opportunities will be within that. So would ask that we suspend the rules and adopt this resolution today so we can get it up to the State House as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. The Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Very briefly, rise to thank my dear colleague and friend, the At-Large Counselor from Rosendale, for her, again, continued partnership on this. This is really important, it's a no-brainer. It dovetails nicely to the work that this body's done as it relates to net-zero carbon construction, as well as community choice energy, which, again, partnering with the At-Large Counselor from Rosendale. We are excited to see the light, the solar-powered light at the end of the tunnel, and looking forward to see just the number of Bostonians that automatically opt up to 100% renewable. That won't be the default. The default is going to grow our renewable portfolio significantly, but there will be an opportunity to, to opt up, and we've seen many other neighboring cities and towns. So many residents do just that. Again, this is something that is not only good for the environment, but good for the consumer as well. Solar is growing so quickly, other renewable energy sources, and the cost is coming down. So as I said, as I've said countless times, every fiscal conservative ought to be an environmentalist, this is another way we can address that, address the huge issues as it relates to climate change, and at the same time, save ratepayers, save taxpayers, save individuals' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Is anyone else looking to speak or add their name to this resolution? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, and please also add the Chair. Counselor Wu and Counselor O'Malley seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 0426. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and Docket 0426 has been adopted. Madam Clerk, could you please read Docket 0427?
Docket 0427, Counselors Edwards and Janey offered the following order for hearing regarding by annual review of the Boston Employment Commission and Boston residents' jobs policy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you now have the floor.
Thank you very, sorry. Thank you very much, Madam President. This is continuing our conversation as the Mayor Walsh approved a revised Boston jobs policy in 2017 that required a hearing in April and a hearing in October to review and analyze all of the data, especially with contractors who are working on city projects. What we wanted to make sure is that as we were building the city, those who are building and those construction companies were submitting their data to demonstrate that they are in compliance or not with the Boston jobs policy, which requires 51% residents of Boston, 40% people of color, and 12% women. As a result, the hearing, we had our first hearing actually in October 2019, in October 2018, excuse me, we, at that time, Council President and I, and then Counselor Pressley had called for that first hearing. that first hearing subsequently on April 2019. And then in October 2019, we've had that. So we are continuing that. Conversations, I think, actually got more robust and more inclusive. And we've been talking about specifically enforcement, which is one of the biggest issues that we had, is despite people were violating the Boston jobs policy and nothing was happening. We were also looking at pipeline development with the, Chief Barrows' office had talked about how there is an issue with folks who are qualified and able to work on the job sites, meeting this criteria, so wanted to create a pipeline. They have CSL classes, for example, at the Office of Economic Development, which I thought was great. And also, there was the issue of bad actors. What I pointed out to the chief, and many of us had concerns about, is the fact that under his house, there's the Office of Workforce Development, and then there's also this Boston jobs policy. But we noticed on a project, for example, in East Boston, where a person had worked on a city project, bid for that city project, they did not pay their workers. But they were still able to get, be a contract because the two offices were not talking to each other. And as many of us have discussed wage theft being a big issue, we wanted that to be also a check that the office was going to continue to look at. If you didn't pay your workers, had OSHA violations, how are you able to continue to bid, on the other hand? We wanted both hands talking to each other, and the administration wholeheartedly agreed. So we will continue to have those conversations, and that's what we're calling for, is the next hearing, which would be in April, or has to be in April 2020. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The chair now recognizes the council president. Councilor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Yep. Thank you. I'm really proud to co-sponsor this matter with Councilor Edwards. As you've heard, we have filed this several times. This is a really important issue. I really want to thank and honor those who have come before me. Specifically, there are District 7 councillors who came before me, who really paved the way for workers. Specifically, the late great Councilor Turner, for his tireless work on this issue while, before he was a councillor, when he was a councillor, and since he was a councillor. I also want to lift up and recognize former councillor, Council President, also a District 7 councillor, the late great Bruce Bowling, for his amazing work. This is an economic and racial justice issue, ensuring that construction jobs created by this booming economy that we have here in Boston, this big construction boom, that these jobs are actually going to Boston residents, people of color, and women. That is important, particularly if we are going to have progress and move forward when it comes to closing our wealth gap here in Boston. These jobs are well-paying, they have a significant impact on the racial and economic makeup of our neighborhoods, but yet too often, too many people who come from our neighborhoods in Boston, too many people who are people of color or women are not getting these jobs. These jobs sites often have vehicles coming from New Hampshire, out of state, Rhode Island, or other surrounding towns. And we need to make sure that we are living up to our own standards here in the city of Boston, and that Boston residents, people of color, and women are getting onto these construction sites. The BECC plays a very important role in this process, and it's important that we do everything possible to ensure that they have the appropriate resources, the staffing, to provide the oversight, and that we continue to monitor. As folks know, I monitor construction jobs in my district, and this is really important. I also want to just take a moment to thank all of the partners who do amazing work. Certainly, as I monitor construction jobs, there's BG, there's the Boston Jobs Coalition, there's the Monitoring Committee that I've already mentioned and the members there. I look forward to a very productive hearing, and I encourage my colleagues to participate in that hearing. I look forward to the next steps to help us achieve our shared goals of diversity and local jobs for local residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. The chair recognizes the District 2 city councillor. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. And again, thank you to Councilor Janey and to Councilor Edwards for their leadership to the mayor's office as well. We had several robust discussions on this important issue. And as Councilor Edwards mentioned, wage theft is a serious issue facing our city. There should really never be any place in Boston for someone that doesn't pay their workers a decent wage or worker protection. Also, part of the discussion we've had, and they've made excellent contributions in improving the lives of so many people, is the Boston Building Trades have been an active partner. They have been here with us fighting for decent wages for our workers and healthcare and worker protection. So I want to also recognize the Boston Building Trades are being an active partner as well in this important issue. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any further discussion on docket 0427? Seeing hearing none, would any councillors wish to add their name? Please add the District 5 councillor, Councilor Arroyo. Please add the name of the District 9 councillor, Councilor Braden. Please add the name of the District 4 councillor and Council President Amerita, Councilor Campbell. Please add the name of the At-Large Councillor from Dorchester, Councilor Asabi George. Please add the name of the District 2 councillor, Councilor Flynn. Please add the name of the junior At-Large Councillor from Dorchester, just in time, Councilor Mejia. And please add the name of the At-Large Councillor from Rosendale, also Council President Amerita, Councilor Wu. Please add the chair's name. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I will refer it. And... Okay. Thank you so much.
Best for coming. Wait for something.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Docket 0427 is being referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Wonderful. We will now move on to personnel orders.
Thank you.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0428?
Docket 0428, Council Janey for Councilor Edwards.
Councilor Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0428. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0428 has been passed. Madam Clerk?
Oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
Docket 0429, Council Janey for Councilor Baker.
Councilor Baker seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0429. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0429 has been passed.
Docket 0430, Council Janey for Councilor Arroyo.
Councilor Arroyo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0430. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0430 has been passed. We will now move on to late files. We have one late file, and it's a personnel order. So with it, with, so we, I've been informed by the clerk that there's one late file. It's a personnel order hearing, seeing no objections. We will add that matter to the agenda. Okay, great.
And, and do you have to read this?
Yes, please.
On February 26, 2020, Council Janey for Councilor Wu.
Council Wu seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of the late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the docket has been passed. Is there anyone looking to remove items from the green sheets today? Wonderful. I have been informed by the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda.
Two.
Two. Excellent. Oh, and here they are. Yes. Seeing and hearing no objections, they are added to the consent agenda. The chair now moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda has been adopted. We will now move on to announcements. The chair recognizes Councilor Bach. Councilor Bach, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of Steve Ross, a real legend in the city and the father of Mike Ross, my predecessor by two in District 8 here on this body. And I think it's important to talk about him just for a moment today, not least because as we stand here, the family is celebrating the funeral in Brookline. You know, there's a tradition, in the Jewish tradition, around Passover of reciting a series of blessings and then saying, you know, "Dayenu." If only that thing, it would have been enough, and then adding another blessing upon it. And I've just been thinking a lot about their family, about him, over the last few days, and thinking, you know, if Steve Ross had escaped from the death camps that he found himself in as a young boy, just to survive, Dayenu would have been enough. And then if he had just made it to Boston as a refugee child, as he did, thereto, Dayenu. And if he had, you know, raised a family and been a loving father to Mike Ross and to Julie Ross, Dayenu had a successful career, Dayenu. If, you know, and if he had founded, as he did, the New England Holocaust Memorial, and really brought the word to this whole city, this whole region, about the importance of remembering that moment so that we never follow the past that lead in that direction again, that would have been enough, Dayenu. But then to also work with young people throughout his life and spread that message, and sort of, that message of really going through total darkness into a place of hope, I just think that it's important to recognize today a man whose life was so much more than enough. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Bach. Anyone else have any announcements? I will, just acknowledging that today is Ash Wednesday, want to inform folks that outside of the mayor's office in the reception area, that they will be distributing ashes for folks. So if anyone missed mass this morning, I think they can go get blessed today here at City Hall. Also, a friendly reminder that our Black History Celebration, which is being hosted by myself along with Councilor Campbell, Councilor Edwards, and Councilor Mejia, is today here in the chamber at 2:30. We have a little break before then. I know folks might get hungry, but I do want to remind you that we will have amazing food at this celebration. So take a little snack now, but save your appetite for down-home cooking and slates. Again, we will meet here in the chamber at 2:30 for the Black History Month Celebration. Over the last few years, we've had amazing celebrations. I was here back in 2016, not as a city councillor, but just as a person who follows the city council and very much committed to education. When we honored, or when the council honored black educators in 2017, honored black families. We honored black immigrants. Last year, we honored Black Girl Magic, like we do every single day. And today, we are celebrating black workers and the labor movement. I'm reminded of people like A. Philip Randolph, who in 1937 founded our nation's first official black labor union, the Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters. I'm reminded of the striking sanitation workers that brought Dr. Martin Luther King to Memphis in 1968. I'm reminded of so many black leaders who have made significant contributions over the years, and I feel really blessed that I grew up in a family where I was taught this important history. I'm especially grateful to my father, Dr. Clifford B. Janey. My father taught me so much as a little girl, growing up in the '70s and the '80s, and I carry these lessons with me every single day. Many know my father as a nationally renowned educator, who served as a superintendent of three school districts, three major urban districts, Rochester, New York, thank you, Washington DC, and Newark, New Jersey. Others know my father for his years of dedicated service here in the Boston Public Schools, where he started and began his career as a lifelong educator. But for me, he was just daddy. And sadly, my father passed away, and it's been really difficult these last few days. But I am very encouraged, and I just want to say thank you. There's been just an amazing outpouring of love and support, not only from my council family and central staff and my own staff and everyone in this building, but really the community as a whole in the city of Boston. And I'm just really grateful for the outpouring of love and support, and I'm grateful to be able to carry on his work. So now we will move on in our agenda. I would like to ask all guests and members to rise. We will adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Councilor Arroyo and Councilor Mejia, Hilton Clark. For Councilor Baker and Councilor O'Malley, Joanne Skelly. For Councilor Braden, Joan T. Long and Sandra O'Connor. For Councilor Asabi George, Bernadette Henry Lucian. For Councilor Flynn, Venn McCarthy. For Councilor O'Malley, Virginia Patton and Patricia McCann. And for the entire Boston City Council, Stephen Ross and Dr. Clifford B. Janey. A moment of silence.
The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in the memory of the aforementioned individuals, and the council is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, March 4, which is just next week, at 12:00 noon in the Ayinella Chamber here at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned.